Well, good afternoon, everyone. Today is September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. This is a special session of a Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Board of Commissioners meeting specifically to talk about the two thousand and twenty six budget. This is another workshop pertaining to that event. Before I call the meeting order, I want to announce that some commissioners, staff and public are attending remotely via Zoom by phone or on site. All participants showing by phone should please mute your phones at this time when not speaking to avoid any background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that if you're allowed to speak, that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak. So the public that is participating knows exactly who is speaking. Also, when you speak, please make sure that you speak at an audible level so your comments can be captured for record and memorialization by the clerk. This is critical given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. Um, I will now call this meeting into order. Clerk, can you announce the meeting and roll call, please?
Good evening. You're hereby notified that a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, is scheduled to be conducted in a hybrid format on Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five, at five P M. for a budget workshop in the fifth floor conference room of the municipal office building seven oh one North Seventh Street, Kansas City, Kansas. Roll call. Townsend.
Present.
Burns.
Here.
Ramirez. Hill. Kane.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Stites.
Here.
Davis. Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Garner.
Here. Thank you, clerk. Uh, again, uh, tonight, this is another, another budget workshop, um, on the continuing, uh, process, uh, making sure that our commissioners have all the information they need to, in short order, make an informed decision to adopt, um, the two thousand and twenty six budget for the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to our county administrator, Mr. David Johnson.
Uh, to continue this, uh, this process, mayor commissioners, I'm going to turn the microphone to our budget director, Reggie Lindsey. Reggie?
Good evening, everyone. Reginald Lindsey, Unified Government Budget Director. Tonight I have joining me Dr. Shelley Keneven, our CFO, and then our Deputy Budget Director, Michael Peterson. Today what we're going to cover is, uh, earlier in the budget process, we talked about the sheriff. Uh, he, he requested some additional positions and you all wanted us to come back, uh, with a plan for that, so we have that today. We also, uh, have some non-mated, non-manded mandated, uh, cuts that we had been talking about in some of the prior budget workshops where we've, we've adjusted the totals on those and want to walk through those with you to see if there are some additional cuts you would like to take from those. Also, um, as part of that, we would like to see how we would cover the one and a half meals on the city that we had covered earlier. And then Dr. Shelley Keneven, she's got a few items she's going to cover as far as the, uh, new community benefits districts. Uh, she's going to cover that tonight also. So, um, let's go jump in the, al- also we'll, we're going to discuss, uh, capital, if you all have any questions on capital, we have, we have that available also. Our first slide is, uh, covers proposed sheriff's sworn change. Uh, so we had meetings with, uh, Sheriff Soptick about additional positions that he was in need of. So he gave us a plan where, uh, he'd like additional ten positions. So right now his, uh, F T E count is a hundred and forty five. He'd like to take it up to a hundred and fifty five. Uh, and he'd like to phase the, uh, the ten people in over the year. So he'd have a January recruit class of five F T Es. That impact for twelve months for the whole year of two thousand and twenty six would be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the Drew. To bring on five more in July, he'd have a July recruit class of five F T Es. And the impact for the, the six months starting in July to December would be two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, total impact for two thousand and twenty six would be eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, so, so the annual impact for that with all the employees working annually for a whole year and not phasing them in is like one point one million dollars. And, uh, county meal equivalent is about one point one million dollars. So this is something, um, that I know you all had, um, wanted to, uh, analyze and see what the cost would be and see what Sheriff Soptick, what he could do with as far as F T Es. Uh, the chart that's on the screen, it does show his one hundred and forty five F T Es across our different pay periods. So, uh, goes from one to twenty six, we have twenty six pay periods annually. Uh, so for two thousand and twenty six budget, he'll, 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 he'll be able to fund one hundred and forty five F T Es. Um, the blue line shows what he was at in two thousand and twenty four. And then also the red line shows what he was at in two thousand and twenty five. So we, we can see that, uh, with the one hundred and forty five that we have put in his budget. Historically, he, he has not met those levels. I know across public safety, uh, both police and sheriff, uh, the recruiting has picked up for them. So there could be the possibility he could get over the hundred and forty five. But as of now, um, he hasn't gotten over the hundred and forty five since, uh, it's been a little bit ago. He didn't do it in two thousand and twenty four and he hasn't done it in two thousand and twenty five. Any questions on, on this particular slide? And so what, um, if this is something you all are interested in, in funding, uh, we could either increase, um, go up to a half a mil or we could look for some additional cuts within the county general fund? Any, any questions about this particular slide or?
Yes, Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Reggie. Uh, I have no problem with the numbers. I, I think they're spot on. The question I would have is, I, I really like the fact that he's not going out and jumping out and grabbing the whole ten. I know they're needed, but he's doing five for a full year funding. And he's coming in in July requesting another fun, uh, funding for the other five for a half a year. Then in twenty seven, they'll all be on at the full half mil price. Is that, I want to make sure that's what I'm reading here.
Yes, that is correct.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if we can just speed the budget process along. That those commissioners that want to cut a lot of things, that they make a motion to do that particular one and then we can vote on it. So if they don't want to do this at all, whether it be one or ten, uh, make the motion and let's vote on it and let's speed the process up. That's just my recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, uh, Bynum?
Thank you. Just a question. So with the sheriff's slide, if he were not to get the ten, then the money would not be spent.
That's right, yes.
They'd still need to budget it. Cause we gotta be ready for it if he does get the ten. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So this is, this is a slide, uh, the elected body has seen early on in the budget process. There were, after County Administrator Johnson presented his budget back on August seventh, there were some things that, uh, this elected body wanted to get into the budget. Uh, so these are optional additions that you all had brought back. And they were related to, uh, establishing a quick response team to help with the trash pickup and everything. But as far as right now, the only thing that we do have built in is the hundred thousand dollars for illegal dumping enforcement of, of cameras. So out of all these new requests, uh, the, these are, they're, these are the only ones that are built in. There, there aren't any, uh, additional ones built in.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez.
Um, you may not know this answer, but I'd like to find out with the illegal dumping in all of the cases and charges that the officers in community policing have been, uh, arresting, what kind of money has been, you know, what, what, what are, what are the, the fines that have been paid and where can we put that money towards a hundred grand?
And I, and I don't have that answer right now, but we can definitely find that out for you.
Thank you.
And I don't.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, uh, Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm looking at the optional additions page, the chart you have up there and I see the six twenty five, six hundred and twenty five thousand. Oh, this is bi-weekly land bank mowing. That's all that, that's all that it would take to get us to bi-weekly mowing on land bank. And if that's true, that's great. I thought we needed an additional six hundred and twenty five to get to bi-weekly land bank mowing.
So Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director, that is an incremental additional amount. So that's essentially double what we currently have. So that is six hundred and twenty five thousand additional be, that we would need to add to the budget to get to tw- to two times a month mowing.
Okay, so this, okay, this would be the additional that we're not doing now.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, okay, thank you.
And the other thing that's on this list is, uh, the sheriff deputies that we just talked about. Uh, it is something we just discussed, but it's, it's not yet built in the budget and it's under public safety. And the sheriff deputy, ten deputies at a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Also, we, we did have a meeting with Chief Oakman and he, he, after discussion with him, he doesn't need the additional seventeen patrol officers and he is fine with the F T E that he, he has in his budget right now. So that, that is a thing that could be marked off the list also. But the other items are still definitely open items that are not built in the budget. Is there anything that on this list that, um, anyone can't live out without in the budget?
As early into this budget process, we are, uh, making appointments to do on threes with you this week, to kind of put the finishing touches, get your thoughts, final thoughts on the budget. So, um, get more information from this, then we'll get into the on threes and hopefully that will lead to a budget decision.
Thank you, Administrator. Commissioner Burrows?
I believe Commissioner Townsend's hand was up before mine.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Commissioner Burrows, uh, and Mayor. Um, I'm sorry. Back to the previous slide, I think, slide three. Okay, um, the sheriff's deputies, these are ten deputies, this is a hundred and seven thousand five hundred. Going back early, was that amount more?
That is per person or, or per F T E. So if you add the, uh, ten F T Es up to the amount, it, it equal about one point one million dollars.
Okay.
And again, the sheriff, uh, for two thousand and twenty six, he would need about eight hundred and twenty five thousand because he would be phasing them in. So he'd hire five, uh, right off in January and then another five in July.
Okay, um, I appreciate that. I'm not going to dig through it here. I'm sure I have it. Um, your office provided, I think at one of the last budget meetings, we had the amount, um, that is in the budget for, what I want to say, the, um, matching of the differential that we currently pay the sheriff's department. Am I calling it the right thing? But it's, it's parity, I think parity. So this would be for, uh, staff to come back and, you know, identify, is that something that we could look to cut, adjust or not? My understanding is not a contractual thing. So as make the evaluations, at least from my perspective, that's what I'd like to know. Now that we know what the, the amount is, um, what can we do with that? Is that contractual or not? Do we have any leeway to deal with that? So, thank you. Oh, one other thing, uh, police officers seventeen. What did you say about the, um, comment that our chief made? He didn't need this or he does need this or what?
Uh, so, so when he was here talking to, uh, the elected body, uh, he was concerned about his F T E. And, uh, along with the county administrator, we met with Chief Oakman and we were able to come to a, a plan where he would, he would be able to fill positions. Uh, he didn't need any additional positions. It was just kind of drilling down into his positions. Uh, both the budget office and he getting a understanding of what his F T Es look like. So after we had a discussion, he did not need the additional seventeen F T Es.
Uh, what does this one hundred and seven thousand five hundred represent? This is presenting.
Uh, sort of one hundred and seventy five, one hundred and seven thousand dollars represents how much it is for each F T E. So we were.
Currently built into the proposed budget.
No, but, but he's, he's fine with the F T E count that he does, does have and it's not built into. This additional seventeen is not built into the budget. But the amount of position that he does have, he feels that's what he, he would be able to fill within two thousand and twenty six.
Okay, so what I'm trying to get at is this something we can ignore? He's, you know, he's not asking for that anymore?
Yeah, he's not asking.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, sorry. I couldn't make that a little more clear for you.
That's all right. Thank you.
Uh, it's, this is about three hundred and forty hun-
No, I mean, built into his budget.
I, I, I can't remember the exact, exact count right.
How many in his budget now? How many new positions that he has in his budget now?
So none of the positions, uh, none of the positions or new, uh, that, that Chief Oakman has. It's, um, basically a understanding of when a posi- when someone retires or so, he would be able to fill those positions. And then there was a misunderstanding that if he wasn't able to fill those positions that after they retire or someone leaves, uh, that's, that's where the mix up was.
So through the course of the year, how many is that usually?
Um, I want to say so far this year, we, we've could have had in between twelve and eighteen people retire or leave the force.
Also, the, um, in our discussions with the chief, he, um, he also, um, uh, put in the calculations or remember to put in the calculations of a recruiting class of about twenty one officers. And that will be, um, uh, full time during, um, we'll get out of field training sometime by the middle of, um, twenty six. So when you add what his current staffing level is with what he will be able to, uh, hire from any retirees that he has to experience this year, plus the twenty one in the recruiting class, he realized I have enough in my budget today. It's been already approved in our budget, uh, process from last year. And we won't have to, uh, he doesn't need to ask for additional officers.
Thank you, Administrator. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. One last thing, uh, we were talking about vacancies and has there been any option additional for, you're more familiar with this now, for, uh, head count in the Public Works, particularly Streets Department? Um, my notes from when that was presented was that they were pre-COVID eighty full time, sixty six for two thousand and twenty five, uh, but they were nailed down to about forty two full time positions. Um, so have any additions for that been factored into here at all?
Uh, so as, as part of our meeting on last Thursday, uh, with the elected body, we did have a yellow sheet where we did present, where we were, uh, swapping out administrative position that Public Works has for a, a person that works in a F T E within the Street Department.
Okay.
There was one F T E.
Okay, I'll go back and look for that then.
So as part of, uh, when, when we have the meeting, we have talked about non-mandated program spending. There was an amount of, of forty million dollars that, um, that had. There was an amount of forty million dollars that, that had come up where it was non-mandated spending. When we initially bought that list, it did not apply to the city general fund or the county. It did apply to the city general fund and the county general fund. But we had other funds that were built in it. For instance, we, we had a conversation about debt and it being part of non-dated, non-mandated program spending. And in particular, a new fire facility and a new police facility, each at a million dollars in the budget for 2026. However, if we would have cut that amount from a million dollars, it had no impact on our property tax levy for 2026. So what we did is we went back and refined the list where we only have impact for our city general fund and our county general fund property levy tax. So just to kind of touch on this, this is the city and the county general fund. And what we see in city funds, we have two million dollars. On the county side, we have about one point seven million dollars. That list did, did change from last time the city general fund or, or city funds were, were about fifteen million dollars. But we, we, we needed to pull out like cash projects and cash equipment that totaled about twelve, twelve million dollars. So that number goes down to two, two million dollars, but there is still equipment and projects that is part of this. But the numbers that we had in last time were for like specialty funds, like dedicated sales tax EMS funds. Just funds that were across the city, but they have specialty purposes that they have to be used for. And they did not impact the city general funds property levy tax. So, so that number is, is no longer like a fifteen million dollar number. It is a two million dollar number. And these numbers do directly impact how much we'd be able to cut from the property tax levy. And then in the county general fund, the, the amount before was about three million dollars and it did drop to one point seven million dollars. Most of the impact there came from cash projects and also cash equipment. And then also, we did have some other items on like UG security and also software maintenance. And those were, after going back through the list, just some things we, we could not, we're not able to cut afterward. We were looking through the list as far as like, like would you, you G security and software maintenance? So, so that number did, those numbers did go down.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you Reggie. You talked about the dedicated sales tax for particular funds. And you talked about the cash accounts. The, in review of the dedicated sales tax, those, all of those, were they in compliance with the reserve requirement or were we over? I know they don't impact the general fund. What I'm after is, are we still in any way, shape or form supplementing any of those out of the general fund?
Supplementing the dedicated sales tax?
Yes.
No.
Or not? Okay. So the, he, I think it's the.
So the EMS fund there, I mean, they're, they're, like EMS doesn't
Have a dedicate.
Run on its own.
Right, it doesn't have a dedicate.
I don't know if that was ever, ever the purpose of it either. But, but it, it definitely is supplemented by the city general fund.
Yeah, to a tune of almost a million dollars a year, if I remember correctly.
And, and yeah, I don't, Dr. Kenevian saying is more than, I don't know the number right off the top of my head. But that, that EMS fund, it does have a transfer in it to the city general fund for property tax relief and the amount of two mills also.
Well, the only reason why I was asking is because I know that in the past, those dedicated sales tax funds had a tremendous amount of reserves in them. And we were sitting on that money. And instead of lowering the mills within those dedicated sales tax or re, re-establishing a mill rate that made them fit within the compliance of the policy and reserve ordinances that we have and policies that we have. We were all over the place with them. And I know we've kind of evened them out over the last couple of years. But those mill savings, if you even reduced one of them a quarter mill and use the reserves to equal it out. And that was, that's a quarter reserve that we are taking off of the taxpayer and utilizing, we can't utilize that dedicated sales tax, but that's a quarter reserve that is now available to us somewhere else in the budget. If we wanted to, one, increase the mill level. But we have to take one away in order to put it in. And this is, this gets back to the eight county funds that we had that were, some of them were overfunded. And some of them weren't funded as to fully meet their financial responsibilities. But we were sitting on tremendous reserves. And I was curious as to why the reserves were as high. Because on the, as Chair of the Audit Committee, I was seeing that. But as Chair of the Finance Committee, I was seeing the other side. So I was just trying to ensure that we kept, kept it as even as we possibly could. Identify the exact cost of doing the business and not have the spikes where one year we're getting a lot of money. And then we throw it in reserves, the next year we keep that level high, that, that mill levy high. And let the reserves build and continue to do that, but we're not enhancing services. Or we're not spending money on services. And I think this is some of the questions a few of us have had. But the dedicated sales tax, I want to get back to the reason why I asked that question. Because if we have dedicated sales tax, like the sewer rate and the sales taxes dedicated to the twenty-five police, fire and all of that that we have out there. If there's any way that we can reduce those mills requests within those budgets, help us as a commission identify other resources. And that, so I would hope that if we're looking at the dedicated sales tax, that we're looking to make sure that the reserves are in compliance. And that there's enough money to provide the services that are requested. Because if we're not providing the services, either they're not requested or, or they're not, they're not just being delivered. So anyway, thank, thank you Mayor. Maybe I need to be more explicit about what I'm talking about when we meet.
Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director, I can, I can tell you that one of the strategies that we used to try to get to the two-mill proposed budget was to use any dedicated funding sources the best that we could to, to, to pay for our services. So we definitely have significant items budgeted in the dedicated sales tax. We won't have a large fund balance there if, if everything goes as planned. Also on the county side, we capped the property tax growth for all the levy funds at three percent. And actually with some reductions in other areas, it ended up being more like one percent revenue growth for like the aging fund, the parks fund, the health, health levy. So there are impacts to those funds. They weren't able to increase as much. You, you see more growth from COLAs usually than a one percent revenue growth would be. So we did have impacts on those funds. That allowed us to move almost half a mil over from those funds to the county fund. And then on the debt side, I know Shelley might be able to talk more about this. But there were some very precise calculations that were done on how much revenues we would need to collect for debt. And any excess was also shifted over to the general fund. So we did reduce or shift mills from both the county and the city bond and interest fund over to the general funds through this budget. And I would be surprised if we have any funds that have significant balances outside of maybe the, the stormwater, no, not stormwater sewer fund. But I know that that one is building a balance to help fund the consent decree as well.
Just to add, Shelley Kenevan, Chief Financial Officer. If you look at page seventy-two of your budget document at some point, the fund statement as what's proposed for the twenty-six budget would only leave four hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the fund balance. So we are proposing to spend that down. And that actually takes us below the reserve of twenty-five percent that we would normally want. But we're trying to spend that down on, on capital projects primarily or in capital equipment. If we were to try and calculate a fund balance that we would want to retain, it should be against the personnel. Because that's what you want to make sure that you have adequate funding for. And so that's about six million, six point seven million of the total fund, which is fourteen million. So we won't quite have the twenty-five percent for that fund. Will be quite a bit lower for that one. But we are trying to spend that down to address the capital needs so that we don't have the capital needs hitting the city general and county general fund. If that helps.
And so the slides that we are covering with non-mandated spending on different programs, we want to go through city and county. First one is city and county programs that are tied together where if you cut one, you'd kind of have to cut the other. And then the next one we're going to go through are all city or county. But it's to basically kind of give you all an idea of some options if you all wanted to reduce the mills any more than what County Administrator Johnson has, has proposed to you all.
One clarification to Shelley Kenevan, Chief Financial Officer. If you're interested in the specific cash projects that are included or capital equipment, that's in the CIP section of the budget. So you can get those line item details and we can talk about those as well if you'd like. Right now they're just aggregated just for purposes of talking about the total.
So currently where we have a view of is the commission-driven initiatives as far as non-mandated program spending. So we've got a total of two point two million dollars. The first one is Senior Citizen Disability Income Based Rebate Program that's run out of the clerk's office. We have six hundred and two thousand dollars budgeted there in the city general fund. Then other outside contributions we make to the downtown shareholders of a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And then we have a warming shelter that we do contribute twenty-four thousand dollars to. The rest of it, this, this portion is from the city general fund. The rest of it comes from our community development block grant. And then on the revenue side, we do have proposed in the budget to reduce the BPU pilot from ten point nine percent to nine point nine percent, which is a one point two million dollar impact on our budget as far as we'll have one point two million dollars in less revenue coming in. And then we also do have a separate program that's also run out of the clerk's office where people who qualify for the Senior Citizen Disability Income Based Rebate Program. Their pilot is eliminated for a year, which reduces our revenue. And so that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar impact to our budget. And all these items would be items that you all would be able to adjust if you'd like to. And any questions?
Good question. On the, the downtown shareholders, is that in lieu of the, the Schmidt that they have or is that where they get the funding from or?
Yeah, this is in lieu of the Schmidt. So this is, so all the. Yeah, so basically what this is, is we don't pay your property tax. So it's our contribution as a unified government to the Schmidt.
Shelley Kenevan, Chief Financial Officer, all the other property tax owners would be still paying into the Schmidt. Because we're tax exempt, we calculate and contribute a set amount each year to support that effort because we're located here in the Schmidt district. And that is not required because we are tax exempt. So we could not fund that if that was the direction that you wanted to go. It is included in the budget because we, we believe although it's discretionary, it's still important. And so just making sure that's clear. But all the other property owners would still pay.
The Schmidt is a taxing entity, right? They can raise taxes if they want to.
They can. And they actually did not raise taxes this last year because the assessed value in the district went down a very slight amount, very slight amount. But because of that, then the assessed value didn't necessitate increasing the property tax rate. So just as a point of clarification. So the tax rates didn't change for the Schmidt. And, but they could. And you all will have that before you because you will ultimately approve that. And so you could approve a higher amount if you so chose.
I'm not opposed to that. It's just us being tax exempt and this commission being the ones that levies taxes. It's just, when you think about equity and a lot of other groups, MBRs throughout the, the community. And this one group gets that amount. Again, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just looking at the equity portion of that because there's other entities that I'm sure pay taxes. But, you know, we don't say, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but correct me if I'm wrong. I've never heard of us saying, well, we don't pay property taxes, you know. So in lieu of us not paying property taxes, we'll contribute to this group or this organization. I just, I've never heard of that. And so I just, and again, I'm not opposed to it. I just don't know if that amount couldn't be better shifted to the, the Schmidt. And let that board make that adjustment as opposed to the unified government. I, I don't know. I don't, I don't even know if that's equitable. I, I do believe they need the funds. There's a lot of problems we've had with our downtown. I support more funding to make sure that we can keep our city center clean and safe and all those types of things. Like I'm just, my question is more around the equity and, and just the, we have a Schmidt just on how, how that's, that came to be. And then also the, the the pilot, which is good. We've taken it from eleven point nine percent down to, hopefully down to nine point nine. And I know that was a request I've made across that several of our commissioners made. And this commission has approved to bring this down. The only question I have in that regard, I believe it was in twenty ten or twenty oh nine, if you can help me on that. I believe before they raised it, did we get it back down to that amount around that time to where it was, I believe it was nine point nine percent. But it was raised with a commitment to lower it, but it just never happened. That, I'm just trying to get clarity on that if anybody knows.
I don't know what the rate was in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. It's definitely something we can go back and find out for you.
That, that, if you had it, that's fine. I was just trying to make the point of is that this commission has made, has kept with the promise to the community to get it back down to the nine point nine, I believe it was during, it, it came about, I believe from the, the twenty oh eight national recession. And so the commission at, at that time chose to raise it with a promise to lower it. It just never happened. So I just wanted the, anybody that's watching to know that this commission has made a commitment to gradually get it back down to maintain and keep that promise that this unified government made to our residents, to get it back down at least to the, to the nine point nine. I believe that it were, it was, it was around that nine percent or nine point nine percent. So I just wanted the public to know that promises made, promises kept on the part of this commission. I just wanted, I didn't want that to get lost in that. So Commissioner Bynum? Oh, just real, real quick on the pilot, our, our Deputy CFO Debbie Johncher, she has some information on what you just asked. Sorry Commissioner Bynum.
Mayor Debbie Johncher, Deputy CFO. You are correct. It was nine point nine. I can't remember the exact year, but it was after the two thousand eight housing issue. So it could have been two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, but we did raise it. It was called an emergency pilot. We bumped it up to twelve point eight percent with the intent that it would go back down to the nine point nine. I believe we got it down to ten point nine. And then at some point it jumped back up to, it was raised back up to eleven point nine. And then it stayed there at that point.
Thank you. And I just want to, I want to commend staff and our administrator and this commission to making sure that if promises are made by this unified government. Long time coming, but the promise was kept in that regard. I just don't want that to get lost in that because I know the BPU pilot, that's one of the biggest complaints. It's been a burden. I know that Commissioner Bynum has been working with the BPU staff to look at ways to bring relief. This commission voted to separate residential from commercial to allow for that potential. But in lieu of that, of trying to find ways to bring about BPU pilot relief, this was one of those things that occurred from that conversation was getting back to the promises and the commitment we made to our residents that we would take it back down. So I just, that's more of an applaud to our staff and our administrator and this commission for making that commitment. So thank you. Commissioner Bynum?
Mayor, just on the contribution to downtown shareholders, it's it's been traditional. It's, it's been traditional that the unified government has made a monetary contribution. It does go to the Improvement District. So it's a contribution into the Schmidt is what it is. And we own, you know, multiple buildings downtown within the Improvement District boundaries. And that's the reason why they do also, in the past, I should say, I can't really speak to current practice. They have gone to, for example, the Board of Public Utilities to ask for a voluntary contribution. They might go to the Strawberry Hill KU campus. They used to go to the EPA to ask for a voluntary contribution into the Improvement District. But I do also recall, prior to my time on the commission, there were years, probably '08, '09 with the market crash, where the unified government had to say to them, we cannot make a voluntary contribution. So, and the reason I think they're different is because they are the only NBR that's operating an improvement district. None of the other NBRs are operating an improvement district. But there, there is tradition for paying it, but there is also occurrence of us unfortunately saying to them, we cannot make a contribution this year. So.
Well, you know, with our meetings, you've been in those meetings with the, trying to address some of the challenges in our city center. I'm in no way advocating or, I make a remit that we cut funding. I was just, I guess more of the question was is that with the Schmidt, the board, they have an opportunity to meet that, maybe bringing a little relief from this unified government to have to make that contribution. That's where I was going. But then also, I know as part of those conversations, Commissioner Bynum, I think you were in one of the meetings that we had with them as well as livable neighborhoods where we worked that out and we were able to get that contract signed with the livable neighborhoods. But out of that meeting, I believe that Deputy Administrator Robbins agreed to work to really refine the policy with our NBRs, or at least create one because it's kind of shady. Well, maybe that's the wrong word. It's gray as the, the policy is concerned. I don't believe we have a real solid policy on, on the relationship between livable neighborhoods, our NBRs, and how that all ties in, not just with the unified government, with our community. As part of that, and this is more for our administrator and Ms. Robbins, I don't see her here. But, and for this commission, I think it would be good to really solidify and codify that policy to bring clarity to the relationship between the NBRs, the livable neighborhoods board, as well as unified government, and how that relationship really is of value to our residents. But along that lines, and you hit it, my question has always been, I have nothing against the downtown shareholders-related Schmidt. But, you know, hopefully mayors and commission and staffs in the years ahead would look at our eight NBRs, well, the seven remaining. And what would it look like if they created those benefit districts as well to help improve the dynamic in the districts that they're assigned? That might be a way for, kind of what you're saying, Commissioner Bynum, to relieve the burden on the unified government to make those contributions to those eight, those eight NBRs, neighborhood.
Tell you that an entity that's not an NBR, Business West, had conceived, you probably know this, had conceived of an improvement district out in the boundaries of Business West. They worked on that for a decade and could not bring it over the finish line. It was going to be a sales tax-based rather than property tax-based improvement district. But I don't disagree with you, but I, they spent years getting the signatures needed to form this. It's just not a small thing. That's all I'm trying to say. It's, it's a couple of years of someone being dedicated to that work. And then there's a lot of legal work that has to go with it. So I'm not opposed to it, but it would sure be a heavy lift for any of the other NBRs to achieve it, not that they couldn't.
Well, I don't disagree. It's kind of like when we renamed Earl Watson Center. There was a process that really was, yeah, good luck on trying to get that name. But I believe this commission made a choice to change ordinances and policies, working with our legal department to make it to where the mayor and the commission could take that upon and move that forward. And what happened was is that moved along very quickly without all the stuff that a normal resident would have to do. And so I don't know if that's an option here as we look at policy to get before the commission to see if we could get a, counsel, your...
A lot of that is controlled by state law.
But it's something I guess we could explore. But I think it would be an excellent idea. I feel like if the downtown shareholders could do it, I just, I don't see what, what barriers would be there for seven other NBRs and downtown shareholders, I mean, the Business West as well, to do that. I know that Murrell Bland would probably really like that. I know that was one, yeah, he worked on it for a long time. And I know that was one of his priorities. So, so I know he's still living and he'd probably be happy to see that happen. So, thank you.
Commissioner Stites and Kane both have their hand raised.
Commissioner Kane?
Stites was first, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Stites.
Stites, District Seven. So when we talk about the Schmidt in downtown and we make a contribution that we're, we don't pay any property tax, the Community College is also in that same, I believe, in the Schmidt District. Are they making an annual contribution to the Schmidt?
I don't believe that yet. Staff, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I don't believe their campus is open yet, even though they own the property. But not that I've heard of, Commissioner. Staff, correct me if I'm wrong, CFO?
Shelley Keneven, CFO. I'll just share that Dr. Mosher, the president of the Community College, is also the chair of the board for the Schmidt. So I think they are making a contribution because they were in the process. But we will double check that. But they are definitely involved with the Schmidt because he is the chair of that board.
Well, he's only the chair of the board by appointment. He's my appointment to, just so. I don't think his relationship with the college played into him being the chair of the board. That was more my decision to make him the chair.
Commissioner Kane?
Commissioner Stites, was that your question?
Yeah, that was one. I can, I can hold off on the others. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kane?
When, just a reminder, when we lowered the mill levy and then the governor Kathleen Sebelius came in and eliminated machinery and equipment taxes, and Commissioner Burroughs was a representative at the time, and the Wyandotte County delegation was the only group that voted against that. And Wyandotte County was the group that was most affected by it because they said it was going to benefit the Wichita people, but it didn't. And then in '08, we had the crash. So I'm not giving excuses. Those are facts of what happened. And I'm glad we're working to lower it down. But the goal was back then to lower it back down. But there was things beyond our control that we could not take care of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Director?
Our next list is city-only, non-mandated program spending. And these kind of fall outside of commission-driven initiatives. So we've got a total here of $760,000. We got four items that are part of economic development. They come in around the $50,000 range and one big one at $100,000. That include increased small business grants, marketing housing study, consultants for redevelopment, and then pre-approved building plans. Then we also have our livable neighborhoods, NBRs, in an amount of $220,000. We did cut that funding in half for the 2025 budget year. And we are taking it up back up to the amount of $220,000 to fund it at the level that it was funded at in 2024 for 2026. Then we also have demolition for $220,000. And then neighborhood impacts rents for $35,000. And then planning services, $50,000. And then small program which, within human services, dispute resolution, $4,700, $4,000 budget. And then jumping over to the county, non-mandated program spending. We have the county fair, also the library, and then also the historical museums operating budget. The total $130,000.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez.
Just a quick question. And we'll have to look into this farther with Judd Knapp. But the property maintenance demolition, are we talking about land bank properties that the houses have to eventually go into land bank property that we demo? Do we tack on what demolition costs to that sale price on the land bank property? Is what it costs to remove the house and whatnot?
So before we answer that question, the demolition that we were talking about here is done out of the Neighborhood Resource Center, and it is a city function. And it is used for all kind of facilities that would need to be torn down as far as business or residential. And it doesn't have anything to do with the land bank. But I'm pretty sure we, Michael, we might be able to answer some of those questions about the land bank. But this particular amount is for demolition that is done out of the Neighborhood Resource Center.
So Michael Peterson, Deputy Budget Director. I know being involved with SOAR in the past, I know this demo money was for properties that were unfit, that were not safe structures. Or it could be because there was, there was a fire and the property just had to be torn down. So it's just a variety of uses. It's, it's a contingency fund that the city has to deal with that. And I believe that they do try to bill property owners. And I know in the past, at least, they did try to put property liens for the cost of it if they weren't paid.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as an additional insight into the question that Commissioner Lopez asked, and it would be wise to check with Mr. Knapp. I don't believe there are any structures held by land bank. And that's due in large part to the program that was begun five, six years ago easily that turned out to be very successful. Where if there were structures in the land bank, there was an evaluation done to see if they were savable or rehabable. And in the majority of them were rehabbed and then marketed as Bible housing stock. So we could check, but I don't think there are currently any structures that are held by the land bank. Not to say won't come next year or what may fall into that.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Stites?
Commissioner Stites?
Stites, District Seven. So I guess before we go get a whole lot further down the road here, and I do want to go back to that contribution question so it doesn't get lost. And if, if, I think it was CFO Shelley, I think she said that she can get back and find out if the college is making that contribution. Because it's interesting to me that a taxing entity, the Community College, who taxes across the whole county, has money to make a contribution, our money, across the whole county to a, to a, to the city. So basically what we're doing is we're, we're, the taxpayers having two, two taxes. We're, we're, we're being taxed by the county, by the city, the county, property tax. Then we're taking money out of that to make a contribution. We're being taxed by the Community College and they're taking money to make a contribution to the Schmidt. So I would like to find out if in fact, and I don't want to say for fact because I don't know that they are making that contribution, but I do want to find, find that out. And what would a, outside of Kansas City, Kansas resident, Wyandotte County resident, Bonner in Edwardsville, be making a contribution to the Community College that's being used inside the, inside the, a city, a city contribution? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Director?
Next group of slides we're going to go through are a group of, group of slides that we have talked about before. There are new requests that are included in the City General Fund and the County General Fund. A slide that we're looking at now is a combination of city and county money. These were, if they were to be cut, they'd have to be cut across both the city and the county. Total amount here is about almost $2 million. And again, these are things that have already been built into, into the budget. Next slide here is a breakdown of city-only new requests that have been built into the current budget that equal $2.2 million. And you've got departments from building logistics to economic development, fire department, municipal court, NRC, and police department, and transit, and also legal. Current slide is for county-only departments and functions. So we have a total of about almost $1.7 million in new requests that have been built in that include a request from community corrections, economic development, emergency management, also public works and historical museum, and then also sheriff's department.
I'm sorry. If you go back a couple of slides, one more slide. Yeah, I guess the county fair, the law library, and the historical, those are all non-mandated. How are those, how are those, those entities funded outside of what's there?
So the county fair, they do have contributions. They do have a separate board where they do get some funding and then they make, they do make money off the fair. We all, there is about $40,000 that is not included on this slide that we do have to, have to contribute to them for awards and things like that that they do have to give out to participants at the county fair. And then the law library. I want to say, and Angie, you might know this better than me, but I think the, the bar might help fund it.
Yes, attorney registration, when attorneys register, they have to pay a law library fee that goes towards the law, the law library.
And then the historical museum that, that is, there are some functions that they, they do have to perform as far as taking care of our historical cemeteries. That is mandated. But there's, there's, there's some programming in it that is, is not mandated.
Yeah, because I guess, excuse my ignorance, I always thought that the county owned the county fair, the law library, and the historical museum. That's why I was wondering. To the question about these non-mandated spending programs, especially with the fair, the historical nature of that. The library, that's interesting. I mean, I, I don't know how often it's used. Maybe counsel could tell me.
I'm not, I'm not sure, Mayor. I think a lot of solo practitioners use it. But I'm not sure there are senses for use.
Yeah, and the reason I say that, so much stuff is online now.
Yes.
GPT AI, and you know, you can Google search just about anything and find it. I didn't, I didn't know of the actual usage of the library, lie library. But if the attorneys are paying into it.
They do, yes.
So is there, with as much data and information as out there online, I don't know. Um, it's just a question, um, if the $24,000 is is really needed from the unified government to to support that program. I don't I don't know if there's any research on that. And then parks and recs, I don't know. And our parks directors here, I don't know what what programs are those that the historical museum um i- is doing um outside of other revenue streams. I'm not sure what those other programs are that are not mandated. Because I I would think most things that are part of the Parks and Recreation Department are budgetary items that are given to the account administrator from our parks director, which would make it part of the overall parks budget. So I'm just trying to figure out why that would be excluded as opposed to included in the in the parks uh budget. Uh, I'm sorry. Anybody want to answer that question?
So the the historical museum is one uh one department that has uh at one point in time it was part of Public Works and then at one point in time it did get moved into into parks. Uh, so the things that parks are is are doing with them are things that they started doing when it came from over from Public Works. And Angel could correct me if if uh she has some anything, some things that she may want to add. But I do know they do have to take, the one thing that the uh historical museum does have to do is take care of like historical cemeteries within the Wyandotte County.
Well, I that's a question. If that's the case, I would feel that that's a, that's not a non mandate. I think that would be a necessity to make sure that we are those uh in our cemeteries. I I just don't know how we prioritize what's non mandated. I don't know what that looks like. To me, that's a priority is making sure we take care of our gravesites.
So the cemeteries would not be as part of this, the $18,000. This is more so like the museum, actual museum functions that are including this $18,000.
Okay. It's fair.
Yeah, Angel Farrar, Director for Parks and Rec. So I would probably need to just look at that a little bit closer. But like Reggie said, it could be maybe some of the additional programming that the museum offers. Or maybe some, you know, if it's some marketing items, but I would guess probably some additional programming. Um, but would want to kind of look into that a little bit more.
And and I'm I'm not opposed to that at all. It's just, I guess if I had my ask or wish, if I, it was just, I think the Parks and Recs and the historical museum are really valuable uh to our community and uh and making sure that that's codified in the budget as opposed to something that's not an option, you know, because I I believe that the community and its commissioners said that we wanted to make sure that our parks and now that the historical museum, I think our history is very valuable uh to our community um and our state, um making sure that those are items that, and this is just me. I I'm not speaking for this commission or anyone else. I I see those as uh necessities and and not so much as uh options, so, but thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, um. So so City Hall here obviously is owned by a unified government. We don't pay a utility bill, right? Is that correct?
We don't pay any utility bills to the BPU, but we do pay natural gas uh to natural gas providers within the county.
So as far as BPU. And this building collects uh fees or tickets and things like that, fines, fees and things like that. But the fairgrounds, we own the fairgrounds, right? Unified government owns the fairgrounds, correct? You're what?
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
I think there's a Wyandotte County Fair Association, and I believe they are the owners, the titled owners of the fairgrounds. See Jeff Conway nodding his head, so.
What I'm getting at is apparently they're having to pay a BPU bill. And but but if the unified government owns the ground, right? And if the if you said a fair association. Well, they're they're a total different entity than Wyandotte County, than unified government.
And we can check into that a little bit more for you.
Because I was trying to figure out why they're they're paying a utility bill. If we, you know, if unified government owns the ground, of course, it's
Uh, Chief Counsel.
Yes, Wendy has confirmed that the unified government does not own any of the count, uh, the fairgrounds. So we are not the owner.
And the um you say a a fair association, you know the name of that or is it just?
Their website is wycofair.com. And they do other events out there. They run out the facility so they get revenues to support maintaining that property from not just the fair, but other things as well. It's on their website. One clarification on the historical museum, maybe it was understood, but the amount that Reggie has on this sheet is how much is from the county fund. The historic society is also, or I'm sorry, the museum is funded from the park fund. They also have funding over there. That's not their total budget. We have three employees that are funded out of the park fund, so I just wanted to confirm that. And I, we will confirm, but I'm fairly certain this is to do the archives, the official archives for the county. Um, but we will confirm that.
And that was, that's where I was getting at. Anything that's official, I I see that more as a mandate and not as a non mandate. That's why I was just, especially when you talk about uh parks and recreation, historical museum, and those, especially parks, it falling under that umbrella. And both the community survey and uh this commission have prioritized parks as being um a priority. I was just curious as what would be non mandated and so. And if there's things that need to be archived, um, I don't, I don't think that's an option. I think that's something that uh we should be obligated to do. So, thank you, CFO.
Commissioner Kane has his hand up.
Commissioner Townsend. Okay, Commissioner Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. In my prior life, I had to deal with the law library. And back then, uh, lawyers were assess um yearly fee to keep it going and buy any new books or remodel it up there. Uh, I know at one point they took everything out of there because of, as the mayor said, uh, you know, getting online or whatever. If I my memory serves me correct, there was Attorney General's opinion about the law library in counties. And I think that law, that Attorney General's opinion said that there shall be a law library in a county or and or a judicial district. There's 31 judicial districts in Kansas, uh, or Urbans, uh, and you have Leavenworth. Douglas County too, that have, I think, their own. So I don't think that thousand is is online.
Yes, well, thank you. We'll take a look.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Kane.
Thank you, Mayor. I think his staff goes far enough back and long before my time, the the fair had a small uh part of the mill levy. And then it was taken from him or them. And then I can't remember in the first four or five years I was commissioner, they came back and and tried to get it back. And I don't know why it was taken from them. But if you look back, because it made the newspaper way back when, and they brought that to us. Like I said, in the first four or five years I was there. So at one time they did have a mill levy and then it was removed. I have no idea why it was removed or what year it was removed. But that that was something that happened, like I said, long before my time. And some of those uh folks that have been on that board for a long time can explain it a heck of a lot better than I can. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I I, and I know that to be true. I've talked to some of those board members when I've gone to the fair and and they've expressed uh their need to to get back to that and and additional funding from the unified government. Because they're, you know, they just um, they just note uh their ability to keep the fair going in our county and and how much of a struggle that is and so, um, but they did note that as well. So I just uh, I, but I guess you cleared up for me. I was under the assumption, and thanks Legal for clarifying that. I was under the assumption as well is that we own the fair and the grounds and things of that nature. But uh, so that's good information. Commissioner Townsend.
Commissioner Stites has his hand up.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Townsend. Commissioner Stites.
Stites, District Seven. Um, could you pull up the slide um again where it showed? I think it was the one that showed the K-State Extension Office. And and I, and I'm not questioning their work or, but it seemed like I remember if I was looking at it, it showed that uh like $151,000 for a lease. Um, not yet, there it is, yeah, hundred uh the extension building. So my, a a question that I have, are we, and I don't even know if we're able to, I don't, I'm not sure. But we are paying, that's coming out of county funds. Do we not have in all of the buildings that we own? In including City Hall, the county courthouse, the county? Do do we not have space that that could be absorbed into um uh one of our existing facilities?
This is David Johnston, County Administrator. Appreciate you asking that question. Uh, we have been looking for uh in our portfolio of space. And we surprisingly do not have any space for them uh that uh one fits their needs or the size of uh of of space that they need. And so, uh, no, we we do not have anything in our portfolio.
Well, one of, one, okay, thank you. Were you finished? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
One of the things that I was thinking on that, if we didn't have space available that could accommodate, maybe we look at um the American Royal, right? This seems to fit right in with their um um their MO. This could be something that uh that maybe gets gets absorbed into their uh uh facility. That maybe we can look at having a a a space out there for this, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, we 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 talk about all of these discretionary funds and these programs and organizations. And we all have an uh uh what I I'll call them our sacred cows that we want to protect, that we think are extremely important. We, and some of us agree on all of them and many of us disagree on some. I would propose that maybe as we move forward, uh, maybe I won't be here. But next year, do a community uh survey that asks, would they be willing to fund this through taxes or a special fee that they pay, put it to the public? Because there's a number of discretionary items on here that we all feel are extremely important. But we may be looking at it from a small group that we are associated with and not necessarily community wide. And if the community sees that they have limited funds and limited resources and it's going to come from them, they're the ones that can make the decision and give this count, this commission guidance as to what's important. Downtown shareholders, that's that's one that we talked about funding. Wydeck's another. The the fair i- is one. If you put those out there, we've got the dedicated sales tax to support the fire police and and some of our infrastructure. That that's that's out there and it's clear, they supported it. And it needs to be renewed every 10 years. But some of this other stuff, when we talk about a dedicated s- stream of revenue, it may be best to put some of these before the public. And then we have a revenue stream that takes the burden off of the budget because it will come directly from a dedicated source. And it will allow long-term planning, if you have a 10-year proposal, that you know you can plan for 10 years for funding on that versus throwing something out here for a a two-year funding mechanism and it becomes a sacred cow. Next thing you know, you're carrying it out of the general fund and it's not, it's no longer sustainable or it has a harder impact on the budget overall because other items come on board. That's just a suggestion, Mayor, as as we go through this process moving forward, that there's a lot of things on here, discretionary funding. If you ask people if they want a food kitchen or an animal shelter, let them make that decision, which is important to the community and how they want to fund those. If they want a uh or they want a uh an extension office. Though, some of those things we can help with, but if there's a dedicated sales tax that can be utilized or a revenue stream that can be utilized, it takes the burden off of us in the overall budget on the things that we're mandated to provide support for. But anyway, just a comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And it kind of goes in line with what I was talking about, the NBRs and the what Commissioner Bynum talked about with Business West. And really, I think an ordinance could be in play to where it would empower those groups to hopefully fund some of these things and take that burden off the uh the unified government. Based on what you said, Commissioner Burrows, uh, what the expectations and and the uh the wishes of uh our residents are. And so I I I definitely agree that a lot of this stuff should be community driven. And at some point, um, I don't know if it's through the survey or and and Legal, I, maybe you can help me with that question, if there's a a a ballot measure uh that's maybe non-binding. I don't know what that looks like, if it's even allowed to just a question. Y- y- that that can be put on a ballot with several things that can ask our residents to prioritize some of the things they want. And then it it would give the uh mayor, commission, and more importantly, administrator and staff some clear direction on how to prioritize and it would kind of go in line on um basically uh uh allowing these groups to have the ability uh through uh their dedicated funding streams to be able to fund these these wishes uh or requests outside of the the unified government, they can just do it on their own and free up some funds from uh the unified government's general fund. So those are really great ideas from Commissioner Bynum and Commissioner Burrow. So, thank you, Commissioner Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Stites makes a pretty good point about if you would bring, for example, the extension office even into this building. Uh, I might caution though, they would put up a lot of K-State stuff because they are filled with K-State and we sure wouldn't want to make the KU fans unhappy.
Okay, I rescind that then. I think we can keep them where they're at.
Administrator, if you could circle back on that, because I've had conversations with the administrator about that. I'm not sure of the staff um with K-State Extension. Uh, I mean, we always see the doctor, she's everywhere um whenever there's events. But I'm not sure of the extent of the staff and their equipment and their files and how much they would really need. I'm hearing there might be room at the federal building, but it, but I don't know if if that can be used for that purpose. Um, I know that uh, um, I I do know there's rooms here, I know of one in particular. But I don't know if it'll accommodate all their um computers, their files and all those things. So where are we looking at? Uh, because we were talking about moving them to try and save that 151,000, which, you know, isn't a lot, but but it's enough money that can be used in other areas. So, Administrator.
I think that's uh one of the things that we started looking is try to save that $151,000. And um we did look at the federal building and found out that there are covenants that the federal government says what we can and cannot use that building for. And one of them is, can only be used for justice-related uh uses. And an extension service is not justice-related, so that's, that can't be used for that. Um, we also have um just looked at any of our other, it's either too small. Uh, it's usually it's extremely too small for their staff and workshops that they put on for uh programs that they do for uh neighborhoods and and the like. Um, so uh we're uh we're going to be looking in earnest over the next uh four or five months to see if we can find additional space for it. But right now, uh, Building and Logistics Director did uh look at our existing portfolio and just there's nothing there at this point.
Sure, Bynum.
The off the wall, totally off the wall and totally beside the point of today's work. But I notice in our asset list that Bethany has closed. And there's a building. And there's a building that, and, and the K-State Extension Council does a ton of work in the area east of 635, so I'm just throwing it on the table. Thank you.
You took that right out of my mouth. I grabbed the form from, to, to offer some recommendations. There are some parks, buildings, recreation centers that are either not utilized or being underutilized that, that may be a UG option. I just don't know what that looks like. But if there's a way to, you know, that's one of those, those bullet points that could potentially be taken off when you talk about $150,000. And out of a 509, you know, million-dollar budget, I know that's not a lot, but it, it's something, it's, it's a start. And so.
It's possible that it may be more expensive, you know?
Yeah.
To be there, I don't know, but I'm just suggesting that it's a building that we currently have closed because we don't have staff to operate it.
Commissioner Stites?
Commissioner Stites?
Stites, District Seven, and I, I would be glad to have any K-State in City Hall. You know, if it saves us $151,000, I'm okay with it. But also, so I, I, I'm not 100% sure, but out at the Annex at 82nd Street, is there not a lot of space that's not being utilized right now out, out there? I, I was, and maybe you guys have already looked it over, and this is just me, and I, I didn't mean for, to spend, you know, this one, this one item taking, taking this long. But yeah, I, I, I'm pretty sure the last time I was out there, that the entire top floor was unoccupied.
The top floor is occupied by our Appraisals Department.
Okay, so that, you, you, okay, so there's not space out there. I'll go check that, I'll, I'll go check that one out tomorrow just to confirm. But yeah, okay, if that's not available, it's not available. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you Administrator. If you would, just off the recommendation from myself and Commissioner Bynum, maybe look at some of our underutilized recreation centers and see if there's available space in, in one of those facilities. I know that Earl Watson, I believe, is going to be renting out Earl Watson Center at some point occasionally, but I don't know if that's going to take up the actual office space that may be available out there, that you could put K-State Extension in one of our buildings. It's one thing to, I don't think K-State Extension would be used in the basketball courts, so I just, I don't know. Our Parks Director like to weigh in on that? You know of any facilities, underutilized facilities that maybe could accommodate? I, it's been a while since I've been in all the recreation centers, so I just didn't know if there's something that just really pops out at you, just comes to mind.
Yes, so Angel for our Director for Parks and Rec. I know that we did some preliminary exploration with John Kelly Building and Logistics and with Ms. Denise Diaz, the Director over there at K-State, and looked at Kensington Annex and kind of decided that that didn't really fit the needs. I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that there's a sweet spot of square footage that they'd really like to have for their employees. Earl Watson, Earl Watson Community Center recently got brought up as something to maybe explore. I think obviously that would need more exploration, but there's no reason that programs couldn't coexist. That's really kind of what you like to see in a community center. And I know that we looked at Pearson Hall at one point as well. So I'm happy to work with our Administrator and John Kelly to kind of revisit that and double back and see if we missed anything.
Thank you, Director. As your Director?
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shelley Caneven now.
Shelley Caneven, Chief Administrative Officer. We shared a couple of memos about the two resolutions that were passed by the Commission in terms of new growth and then the economic incentives that are going to be retiring those agreements. I don't know how it was said, that was provided to the clerk, so I don't know if it was copied and distributed. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So I'm glad to answer questions about that, but the resolutions required that these amounts be calculated, so we did calculate them. And then the idea was for the first one, for actually new growth, new construction, that 10% of the growth in assessed value and the related taxes from that be helped to pay off the debt. And so that's not a substantial amount of money for this particular year, but it is assisting with the debt repayment. So that one, that information's available, was $79,000 and some change for the city and $95,000 for the county. So if you have any questions about that, glad to answer that, but.
Now, that's a 10%, right?
Yes, sir. That's what the resolution called for, yeah. And then the second one is the expiring economic development agreements, and that one's a little more complicated. We've tried to simplify that information a little bit. The bottom line is that we have a variety of TIFs, we have a variety of industrial revenue bonds that included property tax abatement. All of our IRBs do not include that, but some do, and that's authorized by the Commission. And then we have the Plaza at the Speedway, which we had estimates from the state because you'll remember on the American Royal Agreement, we were recalculating the base after the TIF retired and then the new agreement for American Royal. So we had our estimates in that. The state finalized and certified those amounts, and they came in a little bit higher, so I've noted that in the, the note here. But the expiring agreements, when the budget was put together, in total on the city side was 3.2 million, on the county side was a million one. That resolution calls for 50% to be set aside to help repay debt or to help reduce property taxes. And so 100% of the TIF revenues are being used to retire debt because several of those TIFs do still have outstanding debt. So those were continuing to keep over to the debt fund. The IRBs are included in the revenue projections, as are the original estimates for the new base related to American Royal. When we got the final amounts, it's actually more revenue. And so this memo, I, I hope it's not confusing. We try to simplify it because it is a little confusing. But we do have 500,000 roughly on the city side and 374 on the county between the TIFs and the extra money from American Royal that is used to help. And then the difference of that is, is used to help close the gap because we're not doing the three mills, it's because we're doing less. So we did include those revenues in our budget, some of those revenues, not all of them. So we didn't include, we didn't discount, if you will, a million six on the city side because that helped to fill the gap with all the reductions you've seen that would help to make sure that we are not increasing the property tax to the full three mills. A portion of that is going to retire debt, and then a portion of it helps just so that we can do the one and a half mills that we're at right now and maybe even lower with additional cuts. So it's a little confusing, but the resolution calls for a calculation, so that information is provided for you. If you wanted to put more money, more of this money towards property tax reduction or debt, then what would happen is we'd have to do additional reductions beyond what we've talked about to fund that because we built those revenues in because we also did not go to the full three mills. I hope that makes some sense. It helped to fill that gap. On the city side, the total is about 500,000, not the million six. Then on the county side, it's 374, not the 579. So if we wanted to put another million dollars of this money, we would reduce our overall city revenues by a million, but we would have to find additional cuts in order to do that, which we certainly can do, and that's been part of this presentation tonight of where some of those reductions could be made.
Thanks, CFO. Commissioner Bynum?
I, I really appreciate the, both of the memos, and I have tried very hard to understand them. I think in this one, the new revenue, expiring economic development agreements, I think you are telling us that the new revenue is going to be currently applied to debt.
A portion of it.
A portion of it. What I'm, could it be any month of the year that, that something that had an incentive rolls back on the tax roll based on the month that it was granted in the first place? Or is it always a one-time-a-year, like January 1? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, so we're actually going to have a more systemic approach to that, but it's once a year because it's in the tax system if they are property tax exempt or however that's worked. So it's in the tax system, and that gets adjusted. So if we have, for example, a TIF, that's collecting all of the taxing districts' money, it continues collecting that until the end of the year. And then if there is any excess proceeds, let's say that we repaid the TIF, like at Plaza at the Speedway, that was a TIF that got repaid, those extra proceeds then get distributed to the taxing districts. So they don't actually lose out, but it is a one-year adjustment that we do, not any month of the year. But we will be bringing forward, gosh, there's eight to 10 TIFs or IRBs, things that are expired and done, that we'll be bringing forward, and we're going to start doing that every November or December so that we keep up with getting those taken off of the books because there's a few of them that are a little bit older, and there's no guidance really in state law that says when you do that. So we are putting that process in place, but to terminate the districts, per se.
And so, for example, what you're giving us here, these would be revenues that, that would start January 1. I'm not trying to confuse it further.
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand it better.
Absolutely. So for the TIF and the IRBs, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It would be January 1. For the, because of, it, it is a very unusual situation that we have with Plaza at the Speedway where we had a TIF that retired, and then it's replaced with a star bond. So we're talking two different kind of economic development tools. And so those monies are still flowing to the special account, okay? And that's where we got the 7.3 million one-time money because with the new, not the TIF, but the new star bonds, it's just sales tax, it's just our money. So there's no distribution to occur. So it is really complicated, honestly. But those are built into the budget for this year, and a portion of them are going to help us reduce and not do the full increase in the tax levy, and a portion of them are going to be used to help repay debt.
Okay.
And that's in total, not just the 50%, but it's in total.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
And since this was our first time, our first stab at it, you know, as, as luck would have it, it was complicated in that we had TIFs that were retiring, but the debt's not paid off. Okay, so that's, and that will cause, so a TIF captures all of your taxing authorities for school districts, community college, all of that. Once that TIF is expired because it's lived out its entire life, when we have, we're required to terminate it, now we will only have the funds that will be the city and the county side of those funds to repay that debt. So we have to recalculate how long it's going to take us to, to finalize those payments, those bonds. And it's something that we've been trying to do, like we brought forward, let's use this community improvement district money to help repay bonds for the downtown hotel that were issued a number of years ago. So we're trying to actively manage those bonds and identify all the different funding sources. When do they expire? The, actually, there's a state bill that passed this year, and while it is an awful lot of work, it's going to be an excellent tool because it has us put all of the information together in terms of every tip we have, every IRB, every CID, every TDD, when they end, the NRAs that are over 50,000. I mean, it's actually a really good report just to get a sense of what kinds of benefits we're doing, but also to be able to really administer those well and make sure we bring forward the terminations when we should be bringing them forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrows?
Mayor, this is a question for Legal. Legal, if we wanted to put a ballot initiative on the November ballot, are we too late to do that?
Jeff, do you know? I'm not sure. I can let you know, can email that answer out.
Election Commissioner told us September 1.
September 1, oh, okay.
He said that?
The Election Commissioner.
Oh, well then, it's the answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Administrator.
You also want to be strategic on when you put ballot initiatives on, is if we're doing our own, then we have to pay full freight on our own. And also, I think we have to have our own polling place, so you can't double, so we have to be very careful on how much do you really want to spend for ballot initiatives and how you want to do it. So you want to make sure we strategically use the ballot system or the election system to our benefit from a cost standpoint.
If I may, the purpose of asking that is, it goes back to my earlier discussion about ballot initiatives for the public to determine what, what's important. I mean, we have public transportation, which is a major issue here, and it's a million dollars' worth of funding. And if public transportation is to be funded, then the regional funding mechanism for KCATA is presently being discussed so we can pick up on some of that public education as a ballot initiative to put forward, which would relieve us of the budget responsibility through the budgeting process. Another one would be, as I stated, the animal shelter. There's, we, you know, we get a lot of calls in reference to the, the size of our facility and the need for an additional facility for the animals, the food kitchens and other. These are initiatives that we all hear about, but if, are they really as important to the public as those that contact us say they are? And that's where the public survey might come in or the initiative to put them on the ballot. But if we could fund some of that with a dedicated revenue stream, I think it would, two, one, it would engage the public in having responsibilities to maintain those services. And two, it would relieve us of having to try to find the monies in a very limited budget. And if we needed to expand those services, the money that we were relieved of from the dedicated revenue source would allow us to do that instead of funding it 100% and then having to come up with another 20, 25, or 30% to keep the program viable. I mean, those, these are just ideas, and I appreciate the opportunity to share them with all of you tonight. But the, I know we all have, everybody in our ears is elected officials, but these are some monumental requests that are being made. I mean, the 3-8 cents sales tax renewal that was done, I think, six, eight years ago, we're coming to the end of it soon, and I would hope that we would consider a rewrite of it so that we take the personnel aspect out of that rewrite and actually put the personnel into our budget and utilize that 3-8 cents sales tax or whatever you choose to do to maybe even increase that sales tax to put it into funding long-term bonding for the fire stations, police stations, and extra capital investment that needs to be made because either way, it's still going to public safety. We may need a new jail, we may need additional amenities to support public safety, and that 3-8 cents, seven, whatever amount is set, would, would be able to do that, and it frees up the money that we're paying for the 25 police, 25 fire, and the infrastructure, that frees it up and comes right into the budget. And that gives you all more money in which to spread around for other things, and it treats our employees fair and equitably instead of letting those 25 be held out there for 10 years and always wondering and speculating, am I going to be one of those 25 that are let go because the renewal didn't go through? So it, it's just a fairness and equitable issue when it comes to how you fund some of your employees and how you fund some of your programs and capital investment. But thank you, Mayor. That's, that may be one of the That's, that may be one of the initiatives I put forward to staff for next year and how you look at things going forward.
Commissioner Stites has his hand raised.
Thank you, Commissioner Stites.
Stites, District 7. And I should have asked this earlier and I don't want to belabor this, but the, the K-State extension, and, and I don't want this to sound crude or mean, but why are we funding that any, at all? Why are, why is the unified government on the hook for a building lease is what I'm asking? And do they have a contract? Do we have a contract with them or how, how, how is that structured? Not sure.
I'll let Commissioner Bynum answer that. She, she has intimate knowledge.
Sorry, and I can't speak specifically to the building part of it. We'd have to look at the state law, but it's required by state law that the county fund the extension council. I can tell you that much.
So are they, so every county has an extension?
Every county has an extension council and
Okay.
it's written into state law that they, that they fund it.
And, and when they say fund it, fully fund at whatever the amount is, 150 or maybe their, maybe the rent is 250,000, so then we
It, it, the monies combined with state monies, possibly federal monies. I don't know that for sure. They might get federal grants and Kansas State University, since that is the land grant university in Kansas. In Missouri, it's MU. And so in Missouri, it's the MU Extension Council, but it's, so there must be something federal about it that makes all the states have to do it anyway. I would need more research or we'd have to have Denise Diaz tell us, she probably knows it inside and out, the director of the Extension Council, but I know it's called out in state law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns.
Commissioner Stites, years ago, the county extension agent was in the courthouse there on the first floor for many, many years. And I'm not too sure why they moved out. I think it was to build new courtrooms. But anyway, they do, they do a wonderful job and, you know, I don't think it's anything that, you know, I agree, we, we need it in the county. There's a lot of people that go out there, you'd be surprised, you know, if they have a problem with their grass or whatever, you know, or their leaves off of a tree, what, what it means and all that, they're just, they're very helpful. And, you know, as far as where they, I think we, wherever they are, I think we ought to make it very easy for the public to get to them into a building. They have their own type of equipment in there and everything else.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I wasn't, I wasn't in, eliminate them or get rid of them. I just really wanted to, like clarification as to what, what the arrangement was, just what, what that really meant, because I was unclear. And then, because I know that they have, what is the current location right now?
It's out there by the old Police Academy. I know we're familiar with, just to the
Yeah, by, by subway, north of subway.
Well, we were, they were, you know where our Police Academy was years ago. It's, it's just to the south of that.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. Which isn't, I don't think is a really large building, by the way, or, or space there, but I don't know. Okay, I'll let that one go. I just, thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to understand it and, and get a better feeling for what it is. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. Just thinking about what Commissioner Burrows mentioned in terms of putting these, some of these items and funding mechanisms on a ballot. And I was going back to the dedicated sales tax when I came in, there was already one passed and we used it for fire police. And each commissioner at the time was able to have a pot of money that they could use for infrastructure or parks. And I'm wondering, because we are so behind on what we're doing with our roads and our streets, if that might not be a good mechanism to get more money into the coffers for streets and roads. We're getting, I don't know about you, but I'm getting so many notices of claims that have been filed. And I think Commissioner Bynum was on that same committee on a previous administration. And I've forgotten how much money we would need just to get up to decent roads, fix what we have and then bump that up. I believe there's a, a member of Public Works who might be able to talk about that if you let him come to the podium, Mayor. But I, I thought that was a good idea. Yeah, the dogs and all that too. But these streets, we have to get more money even somehow into that budget. So, and I mentioned that if that's not something that can be done for that use, I'd rather know it now than later for whoever will come in later.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I think Commissioners, where we're at, I'm sorry, Administrator, were you all done? Okay. I think we're at, tonight was just kind of the continuation. We are nearing the end of presentations from staff. I believe this is Budget Workshop 13. We've had numerous budget workshops, a few in between from presentations from both our Budget Director as well as our CFO outside of our budget workshops on items budgetary related, including the history. CFO did a real good job trying to get a handle on how we got to where we're at today, her and her team. And staff has really, every time we've asked them for something, I, I can say they've done a lot better than years past in getting us the information that we've requested. Few things are still out there, but I know that it's really task intensive and because we just don't have the time, is where we're at, trying to meet that October 1 deadline to get a budget passed, they're presenting you what they have. Where we're at now is, is they've given you all the information to where you all can go home and kind of marinate over these options for cuts, potential cuts. I know there's Commissioners that want us to, to be at revenue neutral. We heard that a couple workshops ago. We have Commissioners that said they're fine with the original Administrator's recommendation and some of us are all in between. Some of us are, are fine with the, I believe it's two mills on the county and 1.5 on the city. Me, myself, I'd like to see us not go above the appraisal allocation that we would be getting at all with no mill levy increase, but that's for this commission to decide. So before you, and the last, I think, three budget workshops gave you all options. Some of the things weren't talked about and I believe it's the, and I encourage you all to look at the debt project schedule, the capital equipment and the cash projected schedule as long, as, as well as the UG asset reduction list. Just in the interest of time, we won't have time to go through those. I say that respectfully, the Administrator will be scheduling three ons with you all to meet with you all, to go over things that you all want to see cut, removed or added. And hopefully he's going to get, come back, he's going to correlate all that information with his staff. He will bring you all a budget that hopefully you all are prepared to vote on in short order. And so that's where we're at. I, I don't believe unless this commission wants one or the Administrator staff is requesting that I put one on the agenda for you, I believe this should be our last budget workshop. Am I correct, Administrator? Administrator says yes.
That's right.
So I believe that he will gather all the information he'll need moving forward from the three ons that he's going to have with you to just really codify any additional cuts or things that you all find acceptable and to try and get a consensus of where you all at to bring you a budget that you all can live with. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have one last question and it's for the clerk. To clarify, on the notice of proposed property tax increase and public hearings, when that was distributed, was, I, I'm looking at the county and the city and it looks like it was set at the three mills per, because that was the maximum mill levy that we adopted.
That is correct.
Okay, so if we adopt 1.5 city and two county, then these estimates are going to come in lower.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
And Commissioner Stites has his hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stites.
Stites, District 7. I'll make it really quick and I just want to address what Commissioner Townsend, what she was talking about. And one of the mechanisms that would help us address the, the infrastructure needs is Sci-Fi. If you guys haven't heard that in the past, I'll make sure that you guys hear it again. It's Sci-Fi. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Administrator.
We don't have it on the screen, but also want to bring your attention that when you are in a position to pass a budget, you're not just doing a budget ordinance, you go to the last page. You are also going to be doing a number of ordinances and some resolutions at that same meeting. One is the budget for 2026, but also the Schmid budget and its tax issue, sanitary sewer rate, the solid waste fee, resolution on the annual BPU pilot, and then the resolution ordinance adopting, of course, our budget and the capital improvement plan. And then at the last meeting, business meeting of the month on September 25th, you will have a resolution about the Wyandotte County Library budget adoption. So there are a lot of responsibilities yet to be done at the, in September for you. So I just want to keep all this in front of you. So you'll have all this to look forward to and various meetings coming up.
Administrator, just on that note, on this last page, I take it you will be getting information too, myself and the commission, recommendations from staff on each one of those five items, or actually six items?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Number five is what we're working on now with you and the other five, I believe. Do you have most of that, Monica?
I do.
So we can get you the other five over the next couple of days. You don't have to wait. But if we can get you one packet of those other five for, to the commission, that'd be great.
I have four. We will not have the Wyandotte County Library.
Okay, I think they have one more meeting to do. And once they get that done, we'll get it to you.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the recommendations as well as the justification for each one of those is something that I'd like to see. And thank you, I just want to thank staff, all your hard work this year. I know you all worked really hard under a lot of pressure. You took a lot of pointed questions. You listened to us grandstand a little bit on our bully pulpit. You didn't blink and you got us the information we needed, at least most of it. Sure, there's a lot more, you know, we have liked to saw, or I should say, we've liked to have seen you brought forward, but what you did bring forward is a lot more than we've seen in years past. This year, the wealth of information that you all produced has been unlike anything I've ever seen before. So I just want to personally say thank you. I want to thank this commission. Those that may be watching, I'd like to say where we've come as a commission in these last four years since I've been mayor, this is my last budget with you. And I'd just like to point out, this commission, off my recommendation, separated commercial and residential on the pilot, allowing for us to get to, to the point to where we are able to work on our scaling back and reducing the residential portion of our pilot. And this commission has voted to, to approve to move us in that direction as well as separating or at least beyond the separation, when you talk about 10% and 50%, we know that 44% of the Kansas City, Kansas budget, based on our administrators and CFO's assessment, goes towards a debt. And so off the recommendation I had, this commission supported us taking 10% and 50% of those future revenues that we know would come in from things falling off that would have otherwise went to the general fund to apply that directly to debt so we can start working on, on reducing debt. And there's other great things that, that have gone on that this commission has, has passed. And, and that says to me that this commission is listening. This year, it is really challenging for these elected officials and even myself. I really don't have a, a big role in the budget other than giving recommendations to the Administrator and to this commission. The, the budget is really the sole responsibility by ordinance of the commission, not the mayor and not even the Administrator. We make recommendations and this commission ultimately decides the majority vote. If I have one recommendation, those la, on that last slide, I always like to point out, and I've already noted where I'm at on any type of property taxes increases, is that we just remember that the biggest complaint that any of us here has always been property taxes and BPU pilot. I think we're working to positively address the pilot in a way that hopefully be beneficial. Property taxes continues to be an issue for most of our residents, especially our working poor, our seniors on fixed income and, and a lot of our entrepreneurs and small business. So, so as I just, I asked this commission, as you make that informed decision on the information that you've gotten throughout the year, to, to come to a conclusion on the budget, that you remember those voices and, and those faces and those people that have asked relief. With that said, there's no further business tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion, second, clerk, roll call.
Roll call, Townsend.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Lopez.
Aye.
Stites.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Vote is seven to zero, the motion carries.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.